I'd love to beg.
Do you have a quorum? We'll call the meeting of the Williamson County Commission to order. First order of business in opening our session tonight, we'll have our invocation led by Commissioner Betsy Hester and our pledge to flag led by Commissioner Arlene Cook. If you'd stand, please.
Let's bow our heads. Dear Lord, we thank you for this day that you've given us. We thank you for our many opportunities that we have in our country and to help us to remember that freedom comes with a price. I pray especially for our troops here and abroad, active duty, retired, and reserves. Just bless them, Lord, and thank you so much for their willingness to serve. I thank you for being with us tonight and help us to have a spirit of cooperation, knowing that our country was founded on ideals of freedoms and just help us to just work together this evening, Lord, and I ask these things in Jesus' name. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation and under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Now call the roll. If you would, press your white button to indicate your presence here this evening. Record the roll, please. Twenty-two present, two absent. Commissioner Ford is out of town on business and Commissioner Green is called and is having some medical difficulties this evening and will not be joining us here tonight. Approval of the minutes of the regular October 9, 2006 County Commission meeting. The minutes were mailed to each of you and the process that we're following now that we've asked if you have any changes or corrections in the minutes, you would share those with Bobby Cook in the Attorney's Office. And he's handed out the proposed revisions to the minutes here tonight. I'll entertain a motion to adopt the minutes and then any corrections, we'll entertain those. So is there a motion? Motion is made and seconded to approve the minutes as presented and then here the proposed revisions. I'll entertain a motion to revise the minutes with these recommendations from Bobby Cook. Motion made and seconded to approve the proposed revisions. All in favor of the revisions, say aye. Opposed? All in favor of the minutes as revised, indicated by saying aye, please. Opposed? Okay. Commissioner Williams abstained, so the motion passes. Twenty-one yes, one abstention. Introduction of the Highway Commission minutes. These were presented to you and mailed out. I'll entertain a motion to accept. Your second? Motion made and seconded to approve or accept the Highway Commission minutes. Discussion. All in favor, say aye. Opposed? Showed unanimous. Citizens' communication. We have one individual that has signed up for appearing before the Commission tonight, Ms. Kathy Weber. Kathy, if you would, come to the microphone and give us your name and address and so that we can have that for the record, please.
I'm Kathy Weber and I live at 1900 Springcroft Drive. I'm a resident of the county and I'd like to have your permission here to pass out some documents and I will direct my discussions to that. I'm representing quite a few people in East Franklin tonight that have come before you several times and... Oops. It's not on. Okay, thank you.
Start over, Kathy, so that everybody can hear you, hear as well as on the broadcast as well, please.
Okay, I'm Kathy Weber and I live at 1900 Springcroft Drive. I'm a resident of the county in the Williamson, off of Clovercroft Road in the Worthington subdivision. And the city had annexed land several years ago and it is now under the beginning stages of being developed. And through the Highway Commission here, they were able, two years ago, to come before the Highway Commission and get access to Clovercroft Road, which we feel is, for the amount of density that this development's going to bring, is going to be a very much of a safety issue. Before you, I have given you pictures of, in the very back, of some accidents that have happened, not on Clovercroft but on Wilson Pike, which is at the intersection of where this development is going to come out onto. Also, on the front, I have given you a document given to David Parker from Smith, Sackman, and Reed Incorporated about the Maze Creek study. We have a lot of concerns over there as citizens, not only relative to the safety and the travel on Clovercroft Road, but also because of the wastewater runoff. And we want to appeal to you as the county. Number one, if the Highway Department is not going to go and require this development or the developer to give us additional funds for road improvements, we're going to come to the county and we're going to ask you for those funds to be appropriated to help get some curves taken out of there that are extremely dangerous to where the sight lines are extremely dangerous and also to get the berms on the side of the road to be able to at least not have those long drop-offs. It's a very, very dangerous situation with more and more development impending, even all the way to Nolansville. Getting through and the traffic now, I mean, the road is gorgeous. It's a gorgeous road for a country road. There's, and it's been beautifully just redone, but the traffic now is not only increased in numbers, it's increased by speed because they are just flying through there because the road is so neatly done. No more bumps, you know, so they're flying through. So we're going to be looking at that for some help from the Commission to be able to get us some funds for that. As far as the runoff, the way that the streams and everything, if you see there in the T-DECK, the developer's going now before T-DECK, even before the final site plans have been approved by the city, to get permits to cross the streams and to rearrange the streams and that. And this all flows to Clovercroft Lake, which is on the county side, which goes through county residents' property that's going to endanger an awful lot of the water, the way that it's running. So whatever the Commission can do to help us out as the citizens of the county, we would dearly appreciate it. Of course, we're working through our commissioners, but the concern I have is that we did approach, and there's a legal letter in here from Bobby to the Highway Commission stating a couple issues. And we, as citizens, for over two years have been looking for the Development Breeze Way to come back before the engineers and the Highway Commission because it changed names in the process. And the plan did change and there was a total plan change as far as the road access to this, but it never got on to the agenda to be reviewed by the engineers. And according to Bobby's note here, it does say that any type of plans need to be reviewed by the engineering department. And since the name of the development changed because it got denied one time in which they did get the road access, it did change. And there was a road that was taken, a responsibility of the city building a road to get in and out of that subdivision safely so that the traffic would go off of Clovercroft Road was taken away. The responsibility was taken away from the developer to do that, even against the Fire Chief's recommendations for the city. So we're asking you, as our officials, to help us to maybe make this done right, just to help us get this development done right. Tell us what we need to do. Get through Jason. I've got my name and phone number on there. If there's any directions of what we can do to better this and to have this done properly, we would really, really appreciate your guidance. That's it. The development process, I mean, even the map in here is also showing where the waterways go, where, how they're trying to develop the property. So I've given you as much information that I have at the moment and we are going to have a public hearing at T-DECK, so we are doing that, but we have very many concerns. So we'd appreciate your help. Thank you.
Thank you very much. That concludes our citizens' communication for this evening. Under communications and messages, we have several things to discuss during this, but first I wanted to thank the folks at Biomenetics for furnishing us a wonderful dinner and the program earlier this evening and thank Dr. Sam Lynch and his group for that. We also have five late filed resolutions that we need to get the direction from this body tonight before we proceed. Our process and our rules are that if there are two objections, we cannot hear these resolutions tonight, so if we don't hear them tonight, they'll be heard in January of '07. First one is late file resolution number 110637, a resolution authorizing the county mayor to execute a grant agreement with the federal government for a road construction project off of Natchez Trace Parkway. Any objection to hearing that resolution this evening? I see no objection, so we'll add that to the agenda. Late filed resolution 110638, a resolution authorizing the county mayor to enter into an interlocal agreement with the city of Brentwood for the construction and use of a telecommunications tower. Any objection to hearing that resolution this evening? See none, so we'll add that. All of these will fall under the other section of the agenda. Under interlocal agreement, this is resolution late filed, 110639, resolution authorizing the county mayor to enter into an interlocal agreement with the city of Brentwood for the purchase and use of a high-speed notification system. Any objection?
No objection.
Yes, Commissioner Chauvin, punch your button so I can catch you there. Go ahead, Commissioner.
On this late file resolution 110639, the equipment is already in place and has, for the most part, been installed.
Thank you, sir.
And there's not a dollar value on this.
Thank you, sir. Any objection to hearing 110639? See no objection, so we'll add that to the other section of the agenda. Late filed resolution number 110640, a resolution to authorize the county mayor to accept a donation of rock for a stone wall reconstruction. Any opposition to hearing this late file resolution? Please so indicate. I see none. And then the final one is resolution amending the rules of procedure for the Williamson County Board of County Commissioners relating to Rule 8.1C Committee. This was an oversight. It's been approved by the Rules Committee and when all the resolutions were prepared, this one somehow or another inadvertently was left out, so it's been approved by everybody. We just didn't get it filed. So any objection to hearing 110641 this evening? I see no objections, so we'll add that to the section under when we're discussing the rules tonight. Also, make a note for the filing deadline for the January '07 meeting. We don't meet, as you know, in December and because the county offices are closed on Monday, December 25th, which would be the filing deadline date, and also closed on Friday, the 22nd, the filing deadline will be Thursday, December 21st at 4:30 PM. So filing deadline for all resolutions for the month of our January meeting will be December 21st, which is a Thursday, at 4:30 PM. So please make that note. Sergeant at arms tonight, Lynn Sutton. Lynn, thank you for being here again. It's always nice to have you here. We'd also like to remind the audience and everyone that's here, this is the legislative session of your Williamson County Government. We'd please ask your cooperation. If you have a pager, if you have a cellphone, please turn it off because if it does go off, we'll ask you to be escorted outside of the room and not be in here. So please give us that cooperative effort as we move along through the meeting tonight. Report of county offices. We're moving on through the agenda. I recognize County Mayor Rogers Anderson.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I only have two items tonight. First of all, I'll let David give the financial side first.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, you have in your packet the normal reports we give you each month. The first one is the monthly budget report. You now have one quarter of the year that we finished through September the 30th and everything appears to be in order there. And if you have any questions on that, we'll be glad to address that. Secondly, we have the report from the Cool Springs Marriott Conference Center for the month of September. Shows that we received a check of $25,007.31. If you'll recall, back in July, we had our first negative month in about 14 or 15 months, but everything's been looking up since then. You also have one of these at your desk that just came in, I believe, today for October, which shows about $41,000 that we received this month, so they are doing very well. Then the third item is the monthly report on privilege tax. Our first look at that, it appeared maybe privilege tax was down just a little bit, but in going back and comparing that to last year, we're right on track where we were last year. So again, looking for a good year in privilege tax. One other thing, Mr. Chairman, that's not in your packet, just kind of a reminder to most of you, but also to the new commissioners, about a year ago, June of '05, we brought you a resolution to allow us to do a refunding issue on a 2002 bond issue. The market was real close at that time. We just wanted the paperwork ready. It did not happen at that time. The market changed. The market is looking a little more favorable now and Stevens is looking that on a daily basis for us and watching that. We have a goal target of approximately $700,000 in interest savings and we're real close and they're just watching that every day. So I wanted to just remind you of that. The paperwork's already done and when the opportunity's right, we'll take advantage of that.
Does she have, do you have a question, Commissioner Coleman?
Yes, I do, Mr. Chairman.
Go right ahead, sir.
There's a, in the September statement, I noticed a spike in fixed expenses, $55,000, $60,000 that...
Was not budgeted and obviously reflects in October as well and the year to date. The October current month seems to go back down to normal. Do you have any idea what that September fixed expense spike was all about?
Mr. Chairman, is one of these reports you're looking at?
The September report. Actual for the current month, fixed expenses, $80,000.
And which fund, Mr. Smith?
Fixed expenses under actual for the current month, September of '06, $80,000.
Marriott, David.
I'm sorry, Marriott.
Oh, I'm sorry. Get on the right report there.
I apologize.
Yeah, I was looking at our report.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Yes, sir, and I would have to get you more detail on that, but there was an item that was included in our contract to be shared by the city and county. And when Noble Investment, when that changed hands approximately two to three years ago, that item was overlooked and they just now discovered that and they went back and made it up for one year. They did not go back to the three-year period from when it started. So there was a spike at that time and we would have actually, would have had a larger check coming to us, but they went back to one year and made that expense up. And I can get you more detail on that.
Thank you, sir. Anything else, Commissioner?
No.
Thank you. Mayor?
Mr. Chairman, if you're wondering why I've got on my patriotic tie and along with Bert and a few others, I'd like to say thank you to the cities of Brentwood on Friday and then today, Franklin. We had many bands. We particularly appreciate the bands from area high schools and Franklin Special School District for turning out at the parade. It was two parades that were well-received and very well turned out, very well participated by all. The final comment that I'd like to make, if I could, was to have Arlene come up and Doug Hood. We are going to receive a very special donation from Rick, I hope he's here someplace. There he is. Thank you. Doug?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. If I could, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to introduce Rick Forsythe of the Tennessee Football Club and it's futbol, F-U-T-B-O-L, which is soccer.
Put that down. I'm happy to present a check of $10,000 in donation to Williamson County Park and Rec from Tennessee Football Club. We are a six-year-old organization, group of volunteers, and I've had the privilege of utilizing the Williamson County facilities. And in those six years, we have really grown to a wonderful organization and just recently have had four players make the U.S. National Team and three players go on to be professional. And a lot of that is because in soccer, the surface is of great importance to us. We also have three major tournaments a year and recently did an economic study on our tournaments and we are generating somewhere around $2 million annually to the majority of the city of Franklin, but most of it is Williamson County. Happens twice, once in September, once in the spring in May, and then we're going to have a college showcase in June as well. There's about 20 million kids that play soccer in the U.S. and we have a great representation here in Williamson County and a lot of it is due because of our support from the Park and Recs, so thank you.
Give it to the chairman.
Mr. Hood, being a soccer parent, the futbol is this one here, the one that you're talking about. Futbol is not round. It's futbol.
Futbol, correct. F-U-T-B-O-L. Futbol, correct.
Mayor?
That concludes everything. I'll entertain any questions you may have.
Any questions to Mayor at this time? Punch your button. It's hard for me to, okay. Commissioner Cook?
I just wanted everybody to know that we will see the $10,000 in the resolution later in our packet.
Very good. Thank you. At this time, Council Cook, if you would... You here? Are you prepared to bring the Commission up to date on where you are on working on the ethics legislation? If you would, please, I know that's something. Report to the body where we are because I know it's a process that you're going through and they need to know what we're doing.
Sure. Mr. Chairman, I was given the proposed ethics policy that C-TAS has come down with. I've taken a look at it. There's going to be a few changes. Lisa Carson is also going to be heavily involved in this. We are going to try and bring back a draft in the January meeting for your review of it. You will, at that time, just review it. We've got till June 30th to approve one. That's about it. We're just at a very early stage. We're still reviewing it. There's a few changes I'd like to make. The process basically will go is if we adopt the policy pretty much in the form they've given us, we don't have to go back to the state for approval. If we make some changes that are material, then we will have to go back to the state for approval of the policy. Thank you.
Any questions of Bobby at this time? I see none. Thank you. Director Schools, Dr. Rebecca Sharber.
Williamson County schools continue to go well this year and our students continue to achieve in many different realms, in athletics and in academics. And the state issued their state report card for school districts on Friday and Williamson County scored quite well. I understand that there are seven school districts in the state who earned all A's in achievement and all A's in value added. Williamson County was one of the seven. The only other county to earn that distinction was Shelby County. The remaining five districts are city or special school districts. Franklin Special School District was also one of the seven districts, so we have much to be proud of. We had 10 schools who earned A's in achievement and A's in value added as well. It's the best report card we have seen, although we have done well consistently on the report cards and we are very proud of the hard work everyone has put in to do, to help our children achieve so well. And we also appreciate your support. One of the outstanding things I noticed on the report card was that almost all of our schools who participate in the T-CAP achievement test made an A in value added in reading. And reading is something which we've supported greatly and we funded greatly. And I think those resources are doing well and that's paying off. And I appreciate your participation in that, too. But it's a huge report card and you can find it on the state of Tennessee website. And please feel free to go in and look at the district and look at each school as well. It has a great deal of information, interesting information in it. Our building program with the two elementary schools is going very well. They are coming out of the ground well and we do expect to have them ready and open in the fall to receive children. Along with opening new schools does come deciding who will get to attend them, so our board is going through discussions about rezoning at this point and they will be having some community meetings to talk to the public about their potential zoning plans. And in January, they plan to actually vote on the zones for the new schools. And I'd be glad to answer any questions in addition to that report.
Any questions of Dr. Sharber? Commissioner Cook, please.
Well, it's not a question. I just wanted to thank Williamson County schools for the fine effort they put forth in helping the Welcome Home 101st, 327th Infantry Division in the parade on Friday. We had schools participating as... in the parade on Friday. We had schools participating as with the Ravenwood and Franklin Band. Woodland students pulled 1,000 yellow bows that are still hanging up on the streets of Brentwood, and Brentwood Middle students came out to the park and sort of formed a guard so that when the vehicles carrying the soldiers through, they screamed and yelled and made so much noise it sounded like they were broadcasting. Plus, we also used some of the school buses to help transport that. So I wanted to thank you.
Thank you. You're certainly welcome.
Any other comments or questions of Dr. Sharber? I see none. Thank you.
Thank you.
We have a very long agenda. Any other committee that wish to report? The Commissioner, Commissioner, go right ahead there, Mr. Miller.
I've just got an old habit.
I was, I sent you to report it. Go ahead.
Ms. Chairman, Commissioners, I know you've got a long agenda. I just want to make it short and sweet. We've got 158 beds open now. We have plenty of beds, so Commissioner Bain, if you need anything to operate on, we'll be glad to take care of it.
Not much left, then.
But we've had several new physicians join our staff this year, and it looks like it's just going to continue. Some of the big groups in Nice are bringing their doctors out here now because it's like what's happening down in Germantown near Memphis. Things are being delivered in the suburbs now, and you don't have to go downtown for very little. And if there's any questions, I'll try to answer them.
Any questions of Mr. Miller? I see none.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Commissioner Mills?
Mr. Chairman, as chairperson of the Education Committee, I'd just like to make this report. We met, and we discussed several buildings and things that we needed for the school system. But during the discussion, we decided that it would be well if people had questions pertaining to the school system that they would send it through the Education Committee. It really is not fair to ask the director of schools certain questions when she has not been informed of it. So we are requesting that if you have any questions concerning the building program, anything concerning the school system, that you send that to us. And you can send it to the chairman if you want the committee, or you can send it to the county commission chairperson. I think it would expedite time if we did that, and we could get a thorough explanation of what's going on, especially about the building program, anything else. So that's our request.
Thank you, Commissioner Mills. Other questions or comments? Commissioner Hayes, please.
Saturday before last, we had our hazardous household or waste day, although we have not officially heard the count that the state would give us. Our official count was in excess of 1,700 cars between the hours of 8:30 and 2:00. That is an all-time high, and I must express appreciation to our solid waste department, our recycling department, particularly Mr. Bumpus and Joanne Jackson, our Keith Williamson Board, and all the participants because countywide and some from without the county came and had heard and brought their household hazardous waste. So thank you for getting the word out, and appreciate everybody taking part.
Thank you, Commissioner Hayes. Other reports or any other information before we move on to elections and appointments? Commissioner Barnwell, please.
I'd just like to mention that the Human Resources Committee meeting scheduled for next week has been canceled, but members of the committee will be receiving a packet from Human Resources with the write-ups on the jobs that we've been discussing, the requests for new job, or new positions.
When was that scheduled, Commissioner Barnwell?
Tuesday.
Red line?
Yep. Next Monday.
So the meeting for, I was trying to get it on the council, the 20th, has been canceled.
Correct.
Okay, thank you. Other, other comments from various committees? Any questions? I see none. Moving on to elections and appointments. This is an appointment by the county commission for the Beer Board Northeast Section, three-year term expiring November '09, term expiring Charlie Fox III, nomination Charlie Fox III.
Move for approval.
Is there a second? Motion made and seconded to approve the Beer Board appointment as presented. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Show it unanimous. Municipal Solid Waste Board, City of Franklin, represented, two-year term expiring, 11:08 of Joe Williams. So there's no nomination, so we'll hold that open for our January meeting. Hospital Board of Trustees at large, districts 1, 2, 3, and 4, three-year term expiring, 5:09, and there's a vacancy on the board now. The recommendation, nomination from the Hospital Board of Trustees is Brown Daniel. Entertained a motion? Motion made and seconded to approve Brown Daniel. Any discussion? Mr. Daniel, are you here?
Yes.
Stand up, please. It's Mr. Brown Daniel. So, any questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Show it unanimous adoption. Thank you very much. Notaries? You've received your list of notaries relative to what's being approved tonight. I'll entertain a motion to accept and adopt the notaries as presented.
Move for approval.
Motion made and seconded to approve the notaries as presented. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Show it unanimous. Consent agenda. We do have a consent agenda. This is presenting Resolution Number 1106-1, Resolution placing $17,550 in the subdivision escrow account for funds in lieu of detention. It saddles Springs Estate, Phase 2A, Section 5. Commissioner Walton?
Move for approval.
Motion's made and seconded to approve the consent agenda as presented. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Show it unanimous. Adoption of the consent agenda. New business. We have several zoning public hearing issues tonight, so we'll move into the zoning request, public hearing, and we'll open now the public hearing for Resolution Number 1106-2, Resolution to amend the zoning ordinance text regarding events of public interest, extensive impact, hours of operation, originally adopted April 18, 1988. The public hearing is now open, so if you wish to address the commission on this particular resolution, if you would, please come forward, come to the microphone, identify yourself, and we'll allow you to address the body. Anybody wishing to speak to Resolution 1106-2? Last call. Public hearing is closed. We'll entertain Resolution Number 1106-2, Resolution to amend the zoning ordinance text regarding events of public interest, extensive impact, hours of operation, originally adopted April 18, 1988. Commissioner Walton?
Clear for approval.
Motion's made and seconded to approve this resolution. Committee reports. Commissioner Walton, please.
Planning Commission 10-4, zero against.
Thank you. Explanation, please.
I'd like to defer to Mike Madison, if I could.
Okay. Mr. Madison, if you would, please come forward. Explain this resolution for us, please, sir.
Yes, sir. This text amendment addresses the hours of operation that are allowed in association with events of, with special events. The text amendment allows the planning commission, I'm sorry, the Board of Zoning Appeals to have a little bit more discretion than they currently have. I believe the current text refers to 10 o'clock starting time. This would allow events to start earlier if the board feels that they're appropriate.
Any further explanation, Commissioner Walton?
No, sir.
Thank you, sir. Commissioner Greer, please.
I was wondering specifically what events and venues you're referring to here.
These are special events that are allowed on a fairly limited basis that would have, that are considered extensive impact, such as, well, Mr. Sanders could probably give some good examples, but such as the Renaissance Festival, some of the events that they have in Leapers Fork. They're required to get a permit for those, and the zoning ordinance prescribes certain criteria that have to be met, one of which is the hours of operation. Again, this would allow the BZA to have a bit more discretion in when those events could start, and as an example, that would be particularly beneficial for events that have school groups as part of the participants.
Thank you.
Commissioner Hayes, please.
I'm aware that there've been some problems with some loud happenings, but I think that maybe the scary thing is the extensive impact. I think we need to let people know, and I hope that you're not talking about anything that's going to discourage the community activities that we have that are such a part of our heritage. And I would assume we are not talking of things like pancake and hamburger, ham breakfast, or spaghetti suppers, or trail rides, or things that are, that are really part of a community. But you're talking about things of extensive impact, such as motor crosses or something that might be loud and monstrous, correct?
Commissioner, if I could address--
Do you dare say, please, Mr. Sanders?
For the last couple of years, of course, this body adopted a set of regulations and definitions regarding extensive impact events, and for the last couple of years, the Board of Zoning Appeals has been doing the review for those impact, special, they are called, they're broken into limited impact events and these higher impact events. And that's not changing. You know, these are on events, one of the first things we ran into was the Renaissance Festival and its review because it does go on for more than two days. There is alcohol served on the premises. There's more than 1,000 people involved. Those are part of the criterion definition of what makes an event required to go in front of the Board of Zoning Appeals. But the starting time and ending time of 10:00 a.m. to 10:00 p.m., then the first thing that happened is that the Renaissance Festival has a special opening day that they have schoolchildren there, and they get them there at 8:00. And they made us aware of that in making their permit request, and so we had the first to look at or grant a variance on the starting time because our criteria had it, it's starting at 10:00. And the board asked that we address that through actual adoption of rules, criteria, to allow them to start events earlier if appropriate.
Any other questions on 1106-2? I see none. This resolution is loaded on the machine, so if you're in favor of this resolution, press the yes button. Opposed, your no button. Has everybody voted, wishes to vote? Court of vote, please.
22 yes.
Thank you. 22 yes. Resolution is unanimously adopted. We'll now open the public hearing for Resolution Number 1163, Resolution to amend the zoning ordinance text regarding farm sales uses, originally adopted April 18, 1988. The public hearing is now open, so if you wish to address the commission on this, through this public hearing for this resolution, please approach the mic, give us your name, address, and we'll allow you to speak. Yes, sir?
Charlie Hatcher, 65, 61 Arnold Road, College Grove. My family and I operate a small dairy farm at that, at that location. Part of the farm has been in the family since 1831. This resolution would allow us to market our farm product directly to the, to the consumer, and in this case would be dairy products, milk and such. We would process it ourselves, including pasteurization, and would meet all state regulations. But it would allow us to add value and might even keep us in business a while longer.
Thank you, Dr. Hatcher. Are there anybody else wishing to address this through the public hearing?
I'm Dwayne Perry. I work with the Williamson County Office of the University of Tennessee Ag Extension Service and just want to reinforce what Dr. Hatcher has said about this amendment. We see it as a good thing for agriculture. It will allow us to do more value-added agriculture. We have a population here that has the means and the desire to be more closely connected to farms for, farms for products that they buy. We've been able to work with that audience with a lot of farm produce, but this is an exception to that, and we appreciate the zoning people helping us get this amendment together. Thank you.
Thank you, Dwayne. Anyone else wishing to speak through the public hearing? I will now close the public hearing. We'll entertain Resolution 1106-3.
Move for approval.
Let me read it in the record, Commissioner Lynch. Resolution to amend the zoning ordinance text regarding farm sale uses, originally adopted April 18, 1988. Motion by Commissioner Lynch, seconded by Commissioner Hayes. Commissioner Walton, please. Committee report?
Planning Commission 9-4, zero against.
Any further comments, Commissioner?
Well, the Planning Commission and myself, as a member of the Planning Commission and as a county commissioner, agree with Dr. Hatcher and Dwayne Perry. I do have a clarification, I think, and I talked to Mr. Perry about it earlier today after having some phone calls. Dr. Hatcher is going to process the milk there, but there may be somebody that would have to send it out to a processing plant and then would be able to sell that. Is that correct, Dwayne?
The plan right now is a contract with Mississippi University, actually to process milk, but this amendment, as I understand from that, does allow us to process on farms. Is that right?
Right. Yeah, okay.
Commissioner Hayes?
I had had a concern that maybe it would interfere and restrict other farm sales of produce, but it does not concern that area because that, they are temporary and seasonal and are addressed in other ordinances, so it does not concern that. I certainly hope that you'll see fit to approve this. Anything we can do to assist our farmers, to help them stay in business, to work with agritourism, to work with the entertainment industry and with the farming industry, we are better. One thing that the United States Department of Agriculture and UT and our national public television says is when Tennessee farmers stay in business, Tennessee countryside stays country. And I can change that to say for Williamson County. If we keep Williamson County farmers in business, maybe we'll keep Williamson County countryside country. Ask for your support.
Thank you. Commissioner Greer?
I agree with Commissioner Hayes. We have a dwindling number of farmers left in Williamson County, and I'd like to keep the ones we have and do everything we can to make them successful. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Anybody else wishing to address Resolution 1106-3? See none. If you're in favor of 1106-3, press the yes button. Opposed, your no button. Has everybody voted, wishes to vote? Court of vote, please.
22 yes.
22 yes, zero no. Motion is unanimously adopted. Public hearing regarding Resolution Number 1106-4, Resolution to amend the zoning ordinance text regarding events of public interest, extensive impact, application deadline, originally adopted April 18, 1988. I'll open the public hearing for this resolution. Anyone wishing to address the commission through the public hearing on this resolution? Last call. Public hearing is closed. Resolution 1106-4, Resolution to amend the zoning ordinance text regarding events of public interest, extensive impact, application deadline, originally adopted April 18, 1988. Commissioner Walton?
Move for approval.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Planning Commission report?
10-4, zero against.
Thank you, sir. Explanation, please.
What this does, in Section 4620 now states-- What this does, in section 4620, now states a 90-day deadline, and we want to delete that and allow the standard deadline to take precedent.
Thank you. Any questions of Commissioner Walton on 11064? I see none. 11064 is on the machine. If you're in favor, press a yes button. Opposed, you no button. Everybody voted, wishes to vote? Court of vote, please.
Twenty-two yes.
Twenty-two yes. Resolution unanimously adopted. Appropriations, 11065, resolution appropriating 582,861.37 of state education funds for bonus for licensed teachers, employees. Commissioner Mills?
Approval.
Motion's made and seconded. School Board, report is 11 yes, zero no. Education Committee?
Seven five, zero no.
Thank you. Budget Committee?
Budget Committee recommends approval, five far, zero against.
Thank you, sir. Explanation, Commissioner Mills?
This is a statewide appropriation, as we say, for the purpose of funding a one-time flat-rate bonus salary for all licensed personnel, which would be the teachers. And the law also requires that it be paid on about October the 1st, and I understand it's already been paid anyway. But the magic word here is there is no local money involved in this. And so, as we know, teachers deserve this, and so we hope you will approve this.
Thank you. Commissioner Jones?
Mr. Chairman, I have a conflict of interest, and I'll abstain.
Thank you, sir. Other discussion, comments? I see none. If you're in favor of 11065, press a yes button. Opposed, you no button. Has everybody voted, wishes to vote? Did I miss you, Commissioner Williams? I'm sorry.
You didn't miss me. I just wanted to remind you that I'm pulling resolution 110617.
Okay, well, let's, okay, let me, I'll come back to you then. Let's vote on this resolution, 11065. Has everybody voted? Record of vote, please.
Twenty-one yes, one abstention.
Twenty-one yes, one abstention, so the resolution is adopted. Commissioner Williams, back to you, sir.
I'm sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt.
No problem.
I just want to remind the chair that I'm pulling resolution 11617.
Okay. Resolution 11617.
It'll be after the appropriations resolution.
So we're pulling 110617, all right? Thank you, sir. Okay, resolution 11066, resolution requesting the Williamson County Commissioner's approval of an intent to fund up to $3,125,000 for the land purchase of a middle school and for middle school design. Commissioner Mills?
Move for approval.
Motion's made and seconded. School Board report is 10 yes, one no. Education?
Seven five, zero against.
Thank you. Budget Committee?
Budget Committee recommends approval, four far, one against.
Thank you. Commissioner Mills, explanation, please.
This is a request for the purchase of land, and it would also be used for architecture fee, too. And at this moment, I'd like for Dr. Sharber to come up with your permission-
Thank you, ma'am.
-to talk about this.
Dr. Sharber, please.
Based on the projections that we're putting together, especially in light of looking at the opening of Longview Elementary School and the opening of the new Nolansville Elementary School, as we look at the middle school projections in the future, we know that Heritage Middle School will soon be full. You remember, we added on to that school as kind of a Band-Aid approach to get us a little further into the future, but we believe by 2009, we will need a middle school in that particular area of the county, based on the projections we've put together. We also believe we'll need another middle school to help alleviate the growth in the Page area. But we do own a piece of property on Henpeck Lane that we believe will work for that particular middle school. We also know, looking at the projections, that we will need another high school, probably somewhere in the south or the mid-part of the county. We are not ready to ask you for the land for that school at this point. We thought we might be, but we're not. But we do need to go ahead and ask you for the funding for this property, so it can get in this particular bond issue, so we can be searching for this property. We will be asking you for the funding for the building in the next bond issue in the fall. And we presented all that information to both committees.
Any questions of Dr. Sharber? I see none. Resolution 11066 is loaded on the machine, ready to be voted upon. If you're in favor, press a yes button. Opposed, you no button. Has everybody voted, wishes to vote? Court of vote, please.
Nineteen yes, two no.
Nineteen yes, two no. Commissioner Wilson is out. Resolution is adopted. Resolution 11067, resolution requesting the Williamson County Board of County Commissioners approval of an intent to fund up to $4 million for the construction of a new maintenance complex. Commissioner Mills?
Move for approval.
Motion's made and seconded. School Board report, 11 yes, zero no. Education Committee?
Seven five, zero no.
Thank you. Budget Committee?
Budget Committee recommends approval, four far, one against.
Thank you. Explanation, Commissioner Mills?
This is a request for a new maintenance building, and it houses food service and technology with storage, and it's right across the road from my house. If that has anything to do with-
Is that good?
As long as they do the right thing, put up trees and things. But they really need, and those of you who've been out there have seen that building, and we do need it, and they need to design it and everything, so they actually need $4 million to complete this project. And since the county's going for bonds in December, this is the time to ask for it. And not because it's across the house, across the street from my house, but I would wish for you to approve this.
I have to remember that, Commissioner Hancock, it's close to Miss Mary. Other questions on the resolution 11067? I see none. If you're in favor of resolution 11067, press a yes button. Opposed, you no button. Has everybody voted, wishes to vote? Court of vote, please.
Twenty-one yes, one no.
Twenty-one yes and one no. Resolution is adopted. Resolution 11068, resolution appropriating and amending the 2006/7 Capitol Projects budget by $6,500,000 for the construction of a new Highway Department facility. Revenues to come from unappropriated highway fund balance. Commissioner Lynch?
Move for approval.
Motion's made and seconded to approve this resolution. The Highway Commission adopted this, five four, five yes, zero against. Property Committee? Property Committee?
Five zero, ah, five far, zero against.
Thank you, sir. Budget Committee?
Five far, zero against.
Thank you. Explanation, Commissioner Lynch?
What this is, if any of you are familiar with, that building up there was built in the early 1950s, and it's way out of date, but the thing is, is they don't have any space. The fire marshal won't let a fireman go in if it catches on fire because of the steel beams going across it, and this is allow them to buy so much property and move it over where they got more room, 15 acres, as opposed to two. And the good part about it, the money won't have to go into a bond issue, will come out of the fund balance. And there was a question or two about the stormwater runoff, but I can read this proposal here, it says that's okay, and that's, will be no problem at all. But they really need this new job up there. If you've ever been there, you'd understand it.
Any questions of Commissioner Lynch on 11068? Commissioner Davis?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Two very quick questions. I noticed the amount is 6,500,000. There's a CD presentation that was sent to all of us, and that had a different number on it. That was 6 million, and I was just wondering what the difference in that six-
The difference is, is five acres up there that the mayor and the Budget Committee agreed that we needed, it joins this property, it's between a road and this property, and to make the property complete, that would buy that extra five acres for the 500,000.
Thank you.
It is the same project, and you are correct, the number was 6 million, start with.
Thank you.
Other questions on this resolution? Mayor Anderson?
Let me, the cloud is 99% correct. Can I help you out a little bit, Cloud?
Yes, sir.
The numbers that you asked for, Mr. Davis, is 6.5. What it was, when we sent the numbers to Al Ritter to get them crunched down to see how much money we needed, he came back, was saying it was approximately $5 million for the construction, as opposed to the 4.5 million, and that's the difference. It was half a million dollars off. Half a million dollars that he's talking about is coming up next.
That's in another resolution.
It's another different resolution. I just did want you to vote on something and whip Cloud a little later. Thank you.
Yeah, that's, other questions of the resolution 11068? I see none. If you're in favor of 11068, press a yes button. Opposed, you no button. Has everybody voted, wishes to vote? Record of vote, please. Thank you. Resolution unanimously adopted, 22 yes, zero no. Resolution 11069, resolution appropriating and amending the 2006/7 Capitol Projects budget by an amount not to exceed 500,000 for the purchase of property adjacent to the John I. Easley Criminal Justice Center. Revenues to come from unappropriated county general funds. This is sponsored by Commissioner Green, but Commissioner Lynch, would you move it, please?
Move for approval.
Motion's made and seconded to approve this resolution for half a million dollars. The Property Committee, report. Commissioner Hancock?
Five in favor, zero against.
Thank you. Budget Committee?
Five far, zero against.
Thank you. Now, Commissioner Lynch?
Well, I've explained part of it. The rest of it is, it does join the Criminal Justice Center up there, which if they ever had to expand, it'll be there, but it joins the two pieces of property together, which makes it a whole lot better for the county. But that's what this 500,000 is for.
Thank you, sir. Any questions relative to this resolution? See none? Excuse me? Commissioner Walton?
I noticed the sheriff's in office. Is he okay with this, since it's going up to the criminal?
I assume he's all smiles. He was the other day, just smiling. See him? Sheriff would probably want us to buy 10 more acres over there, huh? Let's see. Commissioner Smith?
Mr. Chairman, in previous projects and property purchases similar to this, we've had questions about due diligence and the process we follow in acquiring property. I assume all of those processes are going to be followed with this property, as has been requested on others.
Absolutely.
It's been explained, the chair, it's already been done. All due diligence has been completed on both Mr. Hood's project, as well as this one. Let's see. Commissioner Williams?
I just want to state, from the Budget Committee's standpoint, when this resolution went through the Budget Committee, we examined this matter extensively and asked a lot of the questions that Mr. Davis may had, was questioned about, and there was, they did with overlay maps and trying to look into the future, and what was going to be the need of the county, both the criminal justice system and other possible benefits. And I understand that we're getting the property actually at a reduced rate, from what the developer out there, they worked out a deal that the money is going to be at a reduced rate of what the property's worth.
Thank you, Commissioner Williams. Very appropriate. Commissioner Brogman?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Were there specific uses that were articulated in the committee about the usage of this land? In other words, specific?
You talking about the two acres?
The five acres.
Five acres.
This land that's adjacent to both? Is there something that-
No specific use for it right now. I should report on, the question that came up to Budget Committee, what we could do with the two acres where the old building stands now, we can do pretty well whatever we wanted to do with it, the way it's all worked out.
I guess my question is, was the committee's thinking that it would be land appropriate for the Highway Department or for the Justice?
Mayor Anderson, if you would, to answer Commissioner Brogman's question, a lot of discussion. One of the things that was brought up is a spot potentially for an expanded juvenile services bill, and other sheriffs out of space now. Mayor?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Commissioner Brogman, you're referring to the five acres, not the lot where the-
Correct.
Okay. The five acres that we've looked at, about two and a half years ago, two to three years ago, we did a very thumbnail needs assessment of the jail and the ALC Center. At that time, that study was conducted. We have been meeting behind, with several different people, trying to determine what our direction needs to be over the next several years. I don't, Greg, is this loaded up in the machine? The map would show you, if you can visualize this, you're going down Century Court, you've got the jail, you've got the ALC. If you go to the north side of it, you'll see a fenced-in area that is used for the impound lot, and also back there is the firing range. As you travel back towards Columbia Avenue from the impound area, there's a tract of land, he's passing out some maps, I thought you all might have them. As you travel along the base of that land, this five acres could be used, and Mr. Lynch is exactly correct, it could be used for an, thank you, that it could be used for a new expanded ALC Center, it could be used for a new or expanded part of the sheriff's. We have not got that far. In Mr. Williams's comments, the developer has offered to sell us this land at par value, but he would access his land, the remaining part of that land, off of the Columbia Avenue site. The backside of this land, the 15 acres that you just approved for the Highway Department, and the five acres go hand in hand, and we're doing a little bit of chess moving here, hoping that somewhere down the road, that we can be able to come to a decision on what we need to do with the whole criminal justice system, as Mr. Williams has indicated, that we saw the extensive overlays in our committees, and this is, because we just can't afford for this land to get away from us. It is today in no way connected to the Highway Department. Highway funds have to be spent for highway projects. This would come out of our county, county general, and we do not intend to take this to bond either.
But right now, it will just almost serve as a buffer-
Yes, ma'am.
-for the green space between these two facilities, once the Highway Department building is-
For the time being, it would. I do not want to leave you with the impression we're planning to buy that for green space. We're planning-
She's asking.
I understand. I know where you're going, I'm saying-
Both springs eternal.
I understand, but that particular land is very valuable to the sheriff's department and to our ALC Center at some future date.
Thank you. Other questions on this resolution? I see none. If you're in favor of this resolution, press a yes button. Opposed, you no button. Has everybody voted, wishes to vote? Record of vote, please. 22 yes. Resolution unanimously adopted. Resolution 110610, resolution amending and appropriating and amending the 2006/7 Capitol Projects budget by $155,000. Revenues to- Revenues to come from unappropriated county general funds. Commissioner Lynch?
I move for approval.
Second.
Motion is made and seconded. Property committee report. Commissioner Hancock?
Five in favor, zero against.
Thank you, sir. Budget committee?
Five in favor, zero against.
Thank you. Explanation, please.
What this is, in the past, we appropriated 35,000 to our condition, the concession stand, and the bids were way higher than that, so the money went back. What it is, they need another barn out there, but $155,000 is not even close to a barn. This money will cover the space between the two barns and be the same thing as a barn, but it just don't cost as much money, and they can move a lot of the shows that they have inside, outside, under this roof when they cover the space between the two barns.
Thank you, Commissioner Lynch. Any questions of Commissioner Lynch on this resolution? I see none. If you're in favor, press your yes button. Oppose, your no button. Has everybody voted, wishes to vote? Record a vote, please.
Twenty-two, yes.
Thank you. Resolution unanimously adopted. Twenty-two, yes. Zero, no. Resolution 11611, resolution to authorize ad hoc increases in the retirement benefits payable to certain retired employees of Williamson County participating in the Tennessee Consolidated Retirement System pursuant to Chapter 982 of the 2006 Tennessee Public Acts. Commissioner Lynch?
Move for approval.
They're seconded. Motion is made and seconded. Budget committee report?
Five for, zero against.
Thank you. Explanation, please.
What this is, is an increase in some of the retired employees, which we need to help these people all we can, but there's 52 of these people, and the total amount of money is a one-time deal, $10,219. And that, of course, the retirement account's got millions in it, and that one will be a big deal, but it is a one-time deal of $10,219. But this will just help the people that's retired, these 52 people.
And Mr. Lynch, further clarification is coming out of the retirement assets that are already in the plan.
Right, absolutely.
So, no expenditure by local county funds. Any other questions of 110611? I see none. If you're in favor, press your yes button. Oppose, your no button. Everybody voted, wishes to vote? Record a vote, please.
Twenty-two, yes.
Thank you. Twenty-two, yes. Zero, no. Motion is unanimously adopted. Resolution 110623, resolution appropriating and amending the 2006-7 county clerk's budget by $10,000, $10,300. Revenues to come from unappropriated county general funds. Commissioner Lynch?
Move for approval.
Second.
Motion is made and seconded. Budget committee report?
Five for, zero against.
Thank you. Explanation, please.
What this is, we've already appropriated this money one time last year to make the computers between the general, county court clerk's offices and the state compatible, make them work, and the time run out in the last year, budget year, so we haven't appropriated again to make these two computers from the state and the county court clerk's office work together.
Thank you, sir. Questions of Commissioner Lynch? I see none. If you're in favor, press your yes button. Opposed, your no button. Everybody voted, wishes to vote? Several hadn't voted. Commissioner Hester, good. Twenty-two, excuse me, twenty-two, yes. Zero, no. Resolution unanimously adopted. Resolution 11625, resolution appropriating and amending the 2006-7 tourism budget by $20,480. Revenues to come from donations and state grant. Commissioner Cook, please?
Move for approval.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Budget committee report?
Budget committee recommends approval. Five for, zero against.
Thank you. Explanation, please.
Yes, the tourist department visitor, convention and visitors bureau received a grant for $18,500, and they also received a donation of $1,980.
Thank you, Commissioner Cook. Any questions of Commissioner Cook on this resolution? I see none. If you're in favor, press your yes button. Oppose, your no button. Has everybody voted, wishes to vote? Record a vote, please.
Twenty-two, yes.
Resolution unanimously adopted. Twenty-two, yes. Zero, no. Resolution 110626, resolution of intent to fund an additional $3,995,625 for the recreation complex at Longview Construction Project. Revenues to come from upcoming bond issue. Commissioners?
Move for approval.
Second.
Okay. Several commissioners, motion made and seconded. Parks and Recreation Committee, Commissioner Cook?
I think it was five, four, zero against, but I'm not sure if all of us were there, if one was missing. We were all there? Okay, then it was six, zero.
Okay. Six, four, zero against. Budget committee?
Budget committee recommended approval. Five, four, zero against, as amended.
Would you offer the amendment, please, Commissioner Lynch?
The amendment was to request Spring Hill to pay $1,395,000, I believe, dollar additional funds for their share, which would make, be $108,000 a year for them to pay to match part of the money the county, extra money the county's putting in.
Is there a second to the amendment? The amendment is to request Spring Hill to pay one-half of the additional construction cost, $1,389,000, in the form of debt service over the next 20 years. Discussion on the amendment. Commissioner Walton?
Chairman, maybe this is ticky tack, but on, on the amendment printed on my page, the word "request" is not there, it's "require."
Well, we thought that was kind of a bad word to use at this particular time. That's the reason why I said "request."
And, and I see where you're going with that, but I, I'm concerned, if they come back and don't vote it down, then we're going to be on the hook for the $4 million?
Well, Jack, if they don't, if they don't approve their share, we'll have to take a long look at it. What we gonna do? Are we not gonna do it at all? Are, are we gonna cut out that? Are we gonna fund it all? We can cut out the $4 million, but you won't have much of a program done after you do that.
Right.
But this committee should, will have to decide what we gonna do if they don't come up with a little more money.
Anything else? Commissioner Walton?
Can I come back to that? I'm processing.
Okay. You've got your computer working over there. Okay. Commissioner Barnwell?
Yes, I, I'm concerned also with the, with the term not to require it, because if we pass this as is, if they don't come back, we still passed it and we're on the hook for the $4 million. What I gleaned out of the budget committee meeting was that we would have a special meeting later after your visit to Spring Hill if they refuse to cooperate on this particular aspect of the funding, and I think the consensus was that we wanted to make this approval contingent on them participating, if I understood the meeting correctly. And I would think that we got to have some wording in here that brings it back to our table if they should not participate. So I'm not sure what that wording is, but I think we should have wording to that effect.
Thank you, sir.
Mr. Chairman, if, if they refuse to participate, then this county commission has got to look at the whole project again by itself. And what we decide to do will be up to this commission, but Bob is right there, but, but to me, the wording is good enough to request. If they don't do it, then we don't have to do it.
Well, if it has, can I follow up?
Go ahead.
Mr. Chairman, if we do not have stringent wording in here, we have approved this $4 million extra. It doesn't have to come back to us, and I would like to have it where it has to come back to this commission.
Did they put an amendment on it? Did we?
Which requires in the, as is the actual amendment.
Coming back either way. Okay. Well, um, well, let, let me ask this. Commissioner Barnwell, what's your pleasure? Because, of course, Commissioner Lynch's amendment that he offered was to request, written on the bottom, as Commissioner Walton has indicated, is to require. So, you know, that, there is an amendment on the floor. We can allow two amendments at the same time, so if, if you, it's your pleasure to make an amendment, just, we can, we can allow an amendment to the amendment, so if it's your...
I would like to amend it. It goes back to require.
We never got to explain the resolution.
Okay, well, let's, uh, okay. I'm told that the amendment is loaded on the machine like it's typed on the resolution, but that's not his amendment. So, let, let me go to Commissioner Smith. Commissioner Smith?
Well, it seems to me the question is, what is the wording of the amendment that the budget committee recommended to this commission?
The, the budget committee's action, as per the minutes, is as, on the bottom of your printed resolution to require Spring Hill to pay one-half of the additional construction costs. That's what the budget committee approved, and it's on the bottom, and is loaded on our equipment, Commissioner.
To require.
Correct. That's, that's what, as I understand it, correct?
Mr. Chairman, you're exactly right. What it, what it is, we didn't look at it close enough, and that's what it said, "require," but you know the old saying goes, you can lead a horse to water, but you can't make him drink. And we just thought it sounded, I thought it sounded a great deal better to request, because if, if they don't approve it, then this county commission's got to vote on it again. That's not what this is.
But, uh, 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 let's, uh, let's back up just a second here. Back to Commissioner Barnwell and to address Commissioner Smith's point of order. The budget committee approved the wording in the minutes as presented on the bottom of the resolution. That's what's loaded on the machine. The first amendment to the resolution made by Commissioner Lynch was to change the wording to "request" and not "require." That's amendment number one. It's been duly made and seconded. If Commissioner Barnwell wishes to, you know, amend the amendment to clarify what we're doing, to, to change that word to "request" to "require," that's an appropriate amendment, and I'll entertain it.
I will make that recommendation.
Is there a second? So there's a motion and a second to amend the amendment to say to require Spring Hill to pay one-half of the additional construction. So, we've, we've got, we've got two amendments on the floor, so in, in order to properly recognize commissioners, because I've got six people right now wanting to speak, Commissioner Smith, is that clear your concern? All right. Thank you, sir. I'm going to go now to Commissioner Barnwell. You happy with that? Because you're number two.
Yes, sir.
On my thing here. Number three, I'm going to go to Commissioner Cook.
Well, also during that meeting...
On the amendment. Okay, go ahead.
Yes.
Okay.
I thought part of the amendment was, was that we were going also to speak to Spring Hill, and then we were going to have a special call meeting if necessary, if they did not agree to spend the funds on December 4th.
That's, that's correct. You are correct.
Can I ask Doug Hood to come up and confirm this?
Well, let me, let me, I will confirm it. The action that we took, because the, the thinking behind it is if we don't approve something tonight...
Right.
And the city of Spring Hill, you know, does or doesn't, I mean, we, we've got to accept these bids by the 8th of December. That's our issue. By the 8th of December, the bids for this project expire unless we take action. So, what, what occurred at the budget committee based on that was to approve this funding, requiring Spring Hill to pay the one point, whatever million it was. Spring Hill meets in regular session on the 20th of November. When the budget committee took its action on Monday, as your chairman, I called the Spring Hill city manager, administrator, excuse me, and I said, "As chairman of the Williams County Commission, I want to make sure that every member of the board, board of Mayor and Alderman of the city of Spring Hill have every opportunity to see all the bids as soon as possible. Will you, at my request, call a committee meeting of your board of mayor and aldermen and let us come and present this entire package to you?" Because, as we've all said, we've got a problem, and we want your participation in helping us solve that issue. The Spring Hill city manager, city administrator, agreed at my request to call a meeting of their committee, which the committee of the board of mayor and aldermen of Spring Hill is a body of the whole. So they have called a special meeting to address this issue tomorrow night at 5:30, and we'll go down and present all of the information on the bids. It's, it's similar to what I explained to the city administrator. You know, this is not an issue of us against them. We've got an issue that we need their help to resolve. You know, we've decided to expand the kitchen, and we thought it was going to cost $100,000, but it's come back at $150,000. So what do we do now to fix the kitchen like we want it? That was what I explained it. So, that's where we are. We do have a meeting scheduled tomorrow night at 5:30 before the board of mayor and aldermen of the city of Spring Hill. The body's a whole. It's a committee meeting, but it's a special call session for us to do the very thing. The rec group, Mayor Anderson, Mr. Hood, and everybody will be in a position to explain the full bid process. So that's where we are relative to the action that, you know, we've taken. So that meeting is set, Commissioner Cook, for tomorrow evening at 5:30 in the chambers of the Spring Hill City Hall. Any, any follow-up? Let's see. It's Commissioner Cook. Let's move to Commissioner Williams.
First one.
Question's been called for. Is there a second to call the question? All in favor to call the question. Now, this is on the second amendment. Call the question on the second amendment. Okay, the second amendment that's on the floor, that's been duly made and seconded, is to require Spring Hill to fund one-half of the additional costs at $1,389,000. Now, as, as a point of order here, Mr. Legal Counsel, if this passes, we'll still vote the second amendment to change it back, but we're going to vote this one first, so.
I, I thought the amendment was to change the, offered amendment from Mr. Lynch from "request" to "require," and then that would just change the word, and then the amendment as offered by Mr. Lynch would be voted on with whatever word, either "request" if this fails or "require" if it passes.
Right.
Okay, all right. So basically, if this passes, what we're voting on is the initial resolution that was filed. It's on the machine. But anyway, we're going to, all in favor to call the question on the second amendment, say aye?
Aye.
Good. Passes. Unanimously all opposed. Nobody opposed. So that passes. So let's vote. The amendment requiring Spring Hill to fund one-half of the additional cost, $1,389,000. That's the second amendment that we're going to vote on. So if you're in favor of the second amendment, press your yes button to require Spring Hill to pay that amount. Has everybody voted, wishes to vote?
Seventeen.
I voted.
No.
Record a vote, please.
Seventeen, yes. Five, no.
Okay, the amendment to require passes seventeen, yes. Zero, no. So counsel, the first amendment?
The first amendment has been amended, so now the vote is...
On the emotion as amended.
Correct.
So we're voting now on resolution 110626 as amended, which requires Spring Hill to pay one-half of the additional construction in the form of debt service. Commissioner Mills?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just don't see how you can require somebody to do something. You can request, but they can turn us down, and I think it is much better to go in softly, asking them to help us, but just go in with a hammer and say you're going to do this. I don't, I don't think that's, will work very well.
Thank you, ma'am. Commissioner Hancock?
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, the, the governing body of Spring Hill has been watching the events that's happened with the school down there, with the school property, with this project, with other projects that's going on anywhere you're building, and I'm sure they're acutely aware of construction costs because they have so much construction going down there. I really hate us to act like we've got some authority we don't have. We don't have the authority to require Spring Hill to do one thing, and that shouldn't be in there. We have the authority to turn this down if it comes back to us unpassed. But... But those gentlemen down there are businessmen. They know what cost has happened here in the last six months. Every building project that's going on anywhere in this country has seen it just go right out the top. I'm searching for an amendment to this thing that just passed. If anybody can give me any help there with the amendment. I yield.
Okay. All right, we were yielding. Number two is Commissioner Bane.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Sitting on the Budget Committee, I'm not sure that the amendment that we're voting on is the amendment we passed in the Budget Committee. I think what happened and what is not on this piece of paper, I'm sorry, what is not on this piece of paper, is that we required after Spring Hill takes its action, whatever that might be, that the whole project would come back to this commission, and that's what's missing. And I think that would solve the whole dilemma.
I agree.
And we could say "request," we could say "require," we could say whatever we wanted to say. They can do whatever they want to do, then it comes back here for action. And that's what I thought I voted on in the Budget Committee.
Thank you. Commissioner Bane? Commissioner Williams?
Well, I along with Mr. Bane, I've sit on the Budget Committee, but one thing that hasn't been discussed or hadn't been stated at all, is that we tried to, and I think Mr. Cohen was one that actually come up with a way to, for Spring Hill to potentially pay this, and that was during the bond issue, and it actually would only up their payments a hundred and, I'm talking, by recollection now, but it seemed like an additional $108,000.
That's correct.
Oh, and as opposed, and they were paying like $350,000 or $400,000, and so this was gonna be an additional $108,000 over this bond issue.
Correct.
So, it wasn't, we're trying to run this down Spring Hill's throat. We tried to figure out a way to help the county out, and because these things that are wanted are major functions in the rec park, and so we're just trying to figure out a way to fund it. So, I'll yield to anybody else.
Thank you, sir. Commissioner Davis, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. If anybody's keeping score so far tonight, we're at $14,290,000 in new appropriations from different funds, not including what we're talking about now. Now, to switch just a little bit on the Spring Hill Rec Center, my father always taught me, "If you're gonna do a job, do it right." So, these things are really required in a rec center if you're gonna do it right. But there's two parts to that, if you're gonna do the job or if you don't do the job. Some jobs don't need to be done. Looking at all the money that we're spending now, these bills do come home to roost. We're about $38 million annually now in debt service. That's gonna look paltry in coming years, based on what we're doing with required expenditures for schools. Those are going up, too, and they're gonna make these expenditures look pretty small. This is an awful lot of money to spend on a rec center that can be done in other ways, that we have not yet explored. There are private partnerships available that we have yet to explore, and there are other joint possibilities to do it with no county money. Now, it'll take some time, it'll take some effort, but this is something that's great to have in a great county. But schools are a must-have. Sooner or later, we have to stop approving everything that comes across our desk and make a decision on what's the most important. So, we ought to look at the entire project, not just the extra expenditures for the extra expense, which is a third higher than what was approved last year, by the way. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Hayes?
I'd certainly agree with Commissioner Hancock, and I also was at Budget Committee, and I remembered it pretty much like Commissioner Bane remembered. I had understood that we would look at it tonight and request Spring Hill's assistance, and then we would go down there at the special meeting, which you, Mr. Chairman, have so nicely arranged, and then we would come back at a special call meeting and take a look after they would make their decision. Spring Hill has been a team player to this point. They've agreed to $4 million. They've also done roadways. They've done the sewer. They've done other incidentals, as have we. It has been a partnership. I believe that they want a complete, well-run center, just like we do, and I think we owe them the opportunity to go, not with a stick in hand, but with "request" in hand. And Commissioner Williams is absolutely right. David figured out it would be $108,000 a year added on, and that's a very reasonable sighting for something this great. And we know if we wait to build it, it's going to be much later. I would respectfully, Mr. Chairman, ask you to check with our attorney and see, is it possible for us to defer this tonight and have a special call meeting after the meeting tomorrow night, and then later, after the 20th of the month, Spring Hill will meet to vote on that, if we could have a special call meeting for this purpose alone after that meeting?
Counsel, two questions, if you'd address in your response. You've heard Commissioner Hayes's request. One, if we take no action on this tonight, and I'm just thinking out loud, based on what you've suggested, Commissioner, if we don't take any action on this tonight, and I'm at Spring Hill Alderman tomorrow night, thinking about this, I don't know whether you're gonna approve it or not. So, why would I agree tomorrow night, over the next seven, eight days, thinking about this, do anything until you take action?
Perhaps that could be conditional.
So, in order to address and take action on this, as I indicated earlier, by the 8th of December, and that's when our bids expire. If we don't have this locked in by then, then we, we're back to ground zero, and it's probably big ground zero. It's gonna cost us a lot more money. So, that's my comment, and if you would, counsel, if you would address the issue relative to taking no action, deferring this, it's appropriate amendment, it would be appropriate motion to defer. Commissioner Hayes, I want to make sure we know what we're doing. Counsel?
Absolutely. If you took no action, obviously, there's been no appropriation. You would have to meet in special meeting, one way or another. It seems that the language of the amendment that has got the confusion is the word "require," and I believe that what the intent of the amendment, as expressed in the meeting really, is to make this funding contingent on the Spring Hill funding, which, if you did it in that format, that it was contingent on that format, you wouldn't have to have another meeting if they approved it. If they did not approve it, you would have the option of calling a special meeting to deal with the issue absent that. So, I think that really the hang might be the word "require" versus being contingent on at this point, and, but yes, you could call a special meeting post-Spring Hill meeting to take that up.
Okay, thank you, sir. Commissioner Walton, we're back to you, sir.
Commissioner Bob Barnwell, next.
Okay, excuse me. Commissioner Barnwell?
Yeah, I think we're losing track of this. I think that our attorney just gave us the lightning rod here. My concern is if we passed it with "request," and they didn't do it, we're stuck for the $4 million. So, I don't have a problem putting the amendment back on the table, saying we request Spring Hill, but also another sentence to state that if Spring Hill should choose not to participate in this $1,300,000, that this resolution becomes null and void, if it's approved by this committee or this group.
Just like contingent upon.
Contingent upon.
Just like the same contingent of non, not null and void.
Counsel, would you structure an amendment, based on the discussion that you're hearing, that would accomplish what I think the intent of just about everybody around the table is, and that is that, what would the wording and the appropriate amendment be, that this resolution is approved contingent upon the Spring Hill Board of Mayor and Alderman participating at the level of $1.389 million? Is that, that's what we're saying?
I'll pass this amendment to the amendment.
I think that the amendment, as contemplated, would be to the end of the now-therefore-be-it resolved, and would just be in addition of the following, contingent upon the agreement of the city of Spring Hill to pay one-half of the additional construction cost, parentheses, 1,389,000, in the form of debt service over the next 20 years.
Is that your motion, Commissioner Barnwell?
Yes, sir.
Is there a second? Commissioner Hancock?
Absolutely.
You comfortable with that? So, we've got a motion and a second on another amendment. This amendment approves this resolution contingent upon Spring Hill's participating in this at $1.389 million. If this passes and Spring Hill participates, then we don't need a special call meeting. If this passes and Spring Hill does not approve, this is requested, then we have no choice but to call a special call meeting and take action on this before the 8th of December. That's what we'll have to do. So, that's what this amendment, if it passes, will accomplish, so that when we go tomorrow night, we have approved this contingent on their participation. So, any questions on what we're voting on? I know we've got a lot of people requesting to speak, but is that, is that clear with everybody? Everybody comfortable with that? Any questions on the amendment? The amendment is adding that information as read by counsel. So, we've got it loaded, Linda? Resolution 110626, contingent upon Spring Hill funding $1.389 million. Discussion on the amendment? Raise your hand, because I've got numbers all over flashing. If anybody wanted to discuss the amendment, I think it was discussed real well. Commissioner Walton?
Well, if this amendment passes, does it put null and void the amendment we passed a while ago about changing "require" to "request"?
Well, we're gonna get back to the motion as amended, hopefully, tonight.
But we would have had, we would have two amendments.
If this passes, Commissioner Walton, we'll go back to the original motion as amended to require contingent funding upon Spring Hill's funding, and that's where we'll get back to if this passes.
And I'll withdraw my other.
Okay. Any further discussion on the amendment? The amendment is to make this resolution, 110626, contingent upon Spring Hill's participating at the point of $1.389 million. That's the amendment that's on the floor. Okay? No further questions? Let's vote on the amendment. In favor, press your yes button. Opposed, you know button. Anybody voted, wishes to vote? Court of vote, please? So, the amendment, making it contingent, passes 22 yes, so let's go back to the original motion as amended, 110626, now reads that this funding is contingent, this passage is contingent upon Spring Hill participating at that level. If they do, we move forward, and Doug is happy. If they don't, we'll reconvene in special session after they have an opportunity to make a final decision on the 20th of November. Okay. Resolution 110326 is amended. If you're in favor, press your yes button.
Mr. Chairman, point of order.
Excuse me? All right. Commissioner Walton?
Call the question.
Is there a second?
Point of order. Is that possible?
Go ahead.
As the original maker of the previous amendment, that's still in the resolution, I believe, I would like to withdraw that. I can ask for another vote to withdraw that required language.
We already, we already voted on it.
We've already voted to.
I'm fluke. We need to vote to take it out.
We need to vote to take it out.
Counsel?
Yeah, there was a vote on the change of the language from "request" to "require." Now that you have the contingent language in there, in order to remove the required language, you would need a vote. That could be done by voice, voice vote.
As backup of prevailing motion, you can, you can request that. You was on the prevailing side.
I was on prevailing side, and I made it.
Request to reconsider.
Correct.
So, move it.
Okay, I'd like to move. Take the language completely odd that we had passed.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. So, the motion is to reconsider, to take that language out. All in favor of the motion to reconsider, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? So, unanimous reconsideration. So, we now vote the amended motion as amended.
Resolution as amended.
So, Resolution 110626 as amended. Jack has got a motion to call a question. All in, is there a second to call for a question? All in favor to call a question on the amended motion, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Okay. The call for a question on the amended motion passes. If you're in favor of 110626 as amended, press your yes button. Opposed, you know button. Does anybody voted, wishes to vote? Court of vote, please? Twenty yes, two no, with Commissioner Greer and Davis voting no. Thank you very much. Motion is approved. 110627, resolution appropriating and amending the 2006/07 capital projects budget by $10,000 for soccer field development and maintenance revenues to come from donations. Commissioner Cook?
Move for approval.
Second.
Motion's made and seconded to approve this. This is what we heard earlier, that was given to this body from the Football Club Parks and Recreation Committee?
6, 4, 0 again.
Thank you. Budget Committee?
5, 4, 0 again.
Thank you. Any further comments, Commissioner Cook?
No, this was just the check that we received earlier today.
Thank you, ma'am. Any discussion, questions of Commissioner Cook on this resolution? I see none. If you're in favor, press your yes button. Opposed, you know button. Does anybody voted, wishes to vote? Court of vote, please? Thank you. Resolution unanimously adopted. 110628, resolution appropriating and amending the 2006/07 Parks and Recreation Budget by $1,000. Revenues to come from donations. Commissioner Cook?
Move for approval.
Motion's made and seconded. Parks and Recreation Committee?
5, 4, 0 again.
Budget Committee?
5, 4, 0 again.
Thank you. Commissioner Cook?
This is a donation.
Thank you. Questions of Commissioner Cook? I see none. If you're in favor, press your yes button. Opposed, you know button. Does anybody voted, wishes to vote? Court of vote, please? Commissioner Shalfont? Court of vote, please? Thank you. Resolution unanimously adopted. 110629, resolution appropriating and amending the 2006/07 Parks and Rec Budget by $160,500 for six months' operating costs for the indoor soccer arena. At Crockett Park, revenues to come from unappropriated county general funds. Commissioner Cook?
Move for approval.
Motion made and seconded. Parks and Recreation Committee, report?
5, 4, 0 again.
Thank you. Budget Committee?
5, 4, 0 again.
Commissioner Cook?
This is the estimated cost of what it would, what the expenses would be for opening the new indoor soccer center sometime in February, and these are just what was estimated for that six-month period.
Thank you, ma'am. Questions of Commissioner Cook on this estimated expenditures for the new Crockett Indoor Soccer Arena? Commissioner Barnwell?
There's no personnel involved with the opening this facility? Wouldn't there be a cost for the employees, or is it already in budget?
Thank you. Other questions? See none. Resolution 110629 is up for consideration. If you're in favor, press your yes button. Opposed, you know button. Anybody voted, wishes to vote? Court of vote, please? Thank you. Resolution unanimously adopted. 110630, resolution amending the five-year capital improvements budget and appropriating $367,500 recreation privileged tax funds for architect and construction management fees through June 2007 for the Spring Hill Recreation Complex. Commissioner Cook?
Move for approval.
Second.
Motion's made and seconded. Parks and Rec Committee?
5, 4, 0 again.
Thank you. Budget Committee?
5, 4, 0 again.
Thank you. Explanation. Commissioner Cook?
We had appropriated earlier $100,000 to help pay for construction-related costs, and we need an additional amount of money, because the bids came in for the architect and the construction management fees were higher.
Thank you. Questions of Commissioner Cook on 0630? Questions of Commissioner Cook on 0630? Commissioner Greer, please.
Is this the same complex that we were just discussing in resolution 11626?
Yes, ma'am.
Why is this a separate appropriation?
Well, I can explain it.
Go ahead.
When we originally made the first resolution for the project, we only allowed $100,000 for the design fees and construction management. And once, you know, we got further into the details and things, we were going to have to include more costs that we didn't include up and above the 1,000 that we have already used.
Thank you. Other questions? Commissioner Greer?
That's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Parron?
I'm just a little confused about this because in 110626, there was a line that says, "Due to increased cost of the project, additional funding for construction management and architect fees will be needed in an amount of 275." Is this not, are we not talking about?
Mr. Hood?
Yeah.
Would you come forward, Mr. Hood, please? Heard the question?
I'm going to ask Commissioner Cook the same thing that the mayor asked Mr. Lynch. May I help you, Ms. Cook?
Yeah.
These are the original cost of the architects.
Okay.
This is the original cost of the architect and the construction manager. What Commissioner Parron is talking about, what you saw in the last resolution that you did regarding the center is when the price of the bids came in and were up higher, obviously, for the design fees, we had to make, pay more for the construction manager and for the architect. That is in the money that was on resolution 26. This is the original money to pay for the services of the architect and the CM.
Other questions? Any other questions? 110630 is up for consideration. If you're in favor, press your yes button. Oppose, you know button. Does anybody voted, wishes to vote? Record of vote, please. Commissioner Hancock?
Aye.
Okay. Punch your button so we can have you on record there. There we go. All right. Court of vote, please.
Twenty yes, two no.
Twenty yes and two no. Resolution is adopted. Resolution 110631, resolution appropriating and amending the 2006-7 Parks and Recreation budget by $30,000. Revenues to come from participant fees. Commissioner Cook?
Move for approval.
Parks and Recreation Committee?
Six, four, zero again.
Thank you. Budget Committee?
Five, four, zero again.
Explanation, Commissioner Cook?
The Fairview Recreation Association has dismantled some of their youth athletic programs, and Parks and Recs from Williamson County is picking these up, and the cost for these leagues will be paid by participation fees.
Thank you. Questions of Commissioner Cook on this resolution? I see none. If you're in favor of resolution 110631, press your yes button. Opposed, you know button. Does anybody voted, wishes to vote? Record of vote, please.
Twenty two yes.
Resolution unanimously adopted. Twenty two yes and zero no. 110635, resolution appropriating and amending the 2006-7 library budget by $12,000 for the purchase of computer workstations. Revenues to come from state grant funds. Commissioner Barnwell?
Rule.
Motion made and seconded. Budget Committee report?
Five, four, zero again.
Thank you. Explanation, Commissioner Barnwell?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. This is Tennessee State Library and Archives offers technology grants to public libraries, and this is going to pay, this grant from the state is going to pay for two American with disability that have computer workstations for our library system.
Okay. Questions of Commissioner Barnwell? I see none. If you're in favor of 110635, press your yes button. Opposed, you know button. Does anybody voted, wishes to vote? Record of vote, please.
Twenty two yes.
Thank you. Resolution unanimously adopted. Resolution 110636, a resolution authorizing the issuance of interfund capital outlay notes in the aggregate principal amount of not to exceed $10 million of Williamson County, Tennessee, making provision for the issuance, sale, and payment of said notes, establishing the terms thereof and the disposition of proceeds therefrom, and providing for the levy of taxes for the payment of principal of and interest on the notes. Commissioner Lynch?
Move for approval.
Motion made and seconded. The Budget Committee report?
Five, four, zero again.
Explanation, please.
What this is, is $10 million, that money that we have already approved for the last two schools, and this will be short-term borrowing, and we feel like the way things worked out, that we'll probably sell the big bond issue in February rather than try to sell it in December, but this is a short-term note.
Questions of Commissioner Lynch? I see none. If you're in favor of resolution 110636, press your yes button. Opposed, you know button. Everybody voted, wishes to vote? Record of vote, please. Resolution unanimously adopted. Twenty two yes and zero no. We're ready for other. Got about 20 resolutions to go. Take a break? Let's take a 10-minute break. It's about nine o'clock. A few minutes before now, we'll reconvene about 10 minutes after nine.
Okay, we're back in session, all kind of accusations going on up here, but we are back in session. We're under the Section 8 of the agenda under other. Resolution 110612, resolution to appoint Stephanie Warner as a part-time judicial commissioner for Williamson County, Commissioner Shalfont.
Move for approval.
Motion's made and seconded, Law Enforcement Committee.
Seven in favor, zero against.
Thank you. Budget Committee.
Five in favor, zero against.
Thank you. Commissioner Shalfont.
This is just another reappointment of judicial commissioner.
Thank you, sir. Any other questions on Resolution 110612? I see none. If you're in favor, press the yes button. Opposed, you know button. Everybody voted, wishes to vote. Record the vote, please. Twenty-two yes, zero no. Resolution unanimously adopted. Resolution number 110613, resolution amending the 2006-7 assessor property budget to include a new personal property appraiser position revenues to come from existing budget. Commissioner Barnwell.
Move for approval.
Motion's made and seconded. Human Resources Committee report.
Six-four, zero against.
Thank you. Budget Committee.
Five far, zero against.
Thank you. Yeah, on the bottom of your resolution, there are not thirteen people on the Budget Committee. That's five-four-zero against, so make your correction.
This is Resolution thirteen.
This is Resolution thirteen, and thirteen's a good round number, so five-four-zero against on Budget Committee. Explanation, Commissioner Barnwell.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, this is a resolution, Mr. Anglin had a couple people retire and did a reorganization of his office and found out they needed one additional person. The head count is coming out of the county mayor's organization, and there's no new funds. The funds are, there's enough funds in the budget to cover the cost of this position, but he needed a head count transfer in order to be able to do this. Am I correct, Dennis?
Thank you, sir. Any other questions of Commissioner Barnwell on this resolution? Basically, no, 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 no money. No questions. 110613 is up for consideration. If you're in favor, press the yes button. Opposed, you know button. Everybody voted, wishes to vote. Record the vote, please.
One, two, yes.
Thank you. Resolution unanimously adopted. Resolution 110614, resolution approving and authorizing the conveyance of a 1984 Chevrolet van to the 23rd Judicial Drug Task Force. Commissioner Shalfont.
Move for approval.
Second.
Motion's made and seconded. Law Enforcement Committee.
Seven in favor, zero against.
Thank you. Budget Committee.
Budget Committee is five far, zero against, and some of the commissioners that are new on here, the sheriff's cars get a little older sometime, they are given to various departments throughout county government.
Thank you, sir. Questions of Commissioner Shalfont on the Resolution 110614?
What are they gonna do with it? Use it for target practice, eighty-four miles?
A 1984 can't be worth a whole lot. Sheriff says he's delighted to get it.
He's getting rid of it.
Getting rid of it, that's what I think.
Don't jock up the five miles.
Oh, that's right. You're giving it to judicial task, drug task force. I hope they don't have to get in a hurry. Any other discussion on 110614? If you're in favor, press the yes button. Opposed, you know button. Everybody voted, wished to vote. Record the vote, please. Commissioner Brockman.
One, two, yes.
Thank you. Resolution is unanimously adopted. Resolution number 110615, we're starting into several resolutions that are amending and updating the rules of procedure for the Williamson County Board of Commissioners, and all of these, so that we don't have to go through and take a roll call vote, unless there's an objection, I'm willing to vote all of these by voice vote. Is there any objection to taking all these resolutions, I'm talking about on the rules changes, by voice vote and not having to go, because that'll save time. Commissioner Smith.
Mr. Chairman, you're talking about voting them as a group or individual?
No, no. Each individual, just all in favor, say aye, rather than roll call vote. We're gonna do them voice vote, unless there's objection. If there's an objection, we'll do roll call vote. Any objection to taking all these rules changes individually, roll call vote. I see no objections, so let the record reflect. There was no objection. Resolution number 110615, amending the rules of procedure for the Williamson County Board of Commissioners relating to Rule 1, convening the Board of County Commissioners. Commissioner Williams.
Move for approval.
Second.
Motion's made and seconded. Rules Committee report.
Five-four-zero against.
Thank you. Explanation.
This is really a housecleaning measure recommended by the county attorney. Should the second Monday of the month fall on a legal holiday, or an emergency arise, the Board of Commissioners, made by a majority vote, agree to hold a scheduled meeting following a workday after the holiday or emergency.
Thank you, sir. Any questions on the resolution? I see none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Show it unanimous. Twenty-two yes, zero no. Resolution 110616, resolution amending the rules of procedure for the Williamson County Board of Commissioners.
Move for approval.
Relating to Rule 3.10, consent agenda. Motion, but Commissioner Williams is the second. Rules Committee report, five-zero-four, five-four-zero against. Explanation, Commissioner Williams.
The nutshell version of this would be, we've seen a lot of these resolutions that come through, that where the county mayor does the extension on lease agreements and this type thing. Key thing, any new lease agreements, interlocking agreements and agreements of services, terms exceeding the term of the budget year shall not be put on a consent agenda. So we're just asking that these approvals be put on the consent agenda.
Thank you, sir. Questions of Commissioner Williams on 110616? I see none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Show it unanimous. Twenty-two yes, zero no. Seventeen has been pulled. Eighteen, 110618, resolution amending the rules of procedure for the Williamson County Board of Commissioners relating to Rule 6.1, filing resolutions. Commissioner Williams.
Move for approval.
Motion's made and seconded. Rules Committee report, five-four-zero against. Commissioner Williams.
This is a request that our agenda, the county commission agenda, be compiled and along with all the resolutions, and shall be forwarded to the Information Technology Department to be processed and scanned and placed on the Williamson County webpage. And when we did all, we did these things, we checked, and there's no additional cost to that. They do have the technology to do it, and so this was just a way to let the public know what is going to be on the agenda.
Thank you, sir. Questions of Commissioner Williams? I see none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Show it unanimous. Twenty-two yes, zero no. 110619, resolution amending the rules of procedure for the Williamson County Board of Commissioners relating to Rule 6.1, resolutions to be studied by standing committees. Commissioner Williams.
Move for approval.
Second.
Motion's made and seconded. Rules Committee report, five-four-zero against. Explanation, please.
I believe Commissioner Smith has an amendment to this resolution.
Commissioner Smith.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. As we've seen earlier tonight, words can be problematic, and committees can too. Our committee tried to build a horse and wound up with a camel. And some of the wording of this seem to be confusing and of concern to the staff. I've tried to clarify it and simplify it and have reflected that to several members of the Rules Committee, and they approved it. Since this was kind of my idea anyway, as you know, sometimes we're presented with resolutions prior to filing, prior to being signed by a sponsor, and I think this amended wording would get the intent in place. The first sentence down to the first comma, replace that with "when a resolution is prepared." The name of the commissioner, individual, or department head requesting the resolution shall be included under the resolution number. You've seen some of those already tonight on resolutions that you've been presenting. Let me repeat the wording again, the, my amended wording. When a resolution is prepared, the name of the commissioner, individual, or department head requesting the resolution shall be included under the resolution number. That's my amendment.
Motion's made and seconded to amend this to state, "When a resolution is prepared, the name of the commissioner, individual, or department head requesting action on the unfilled resolution shall be included under the resolution number."
No, sir, just requesting the resolution.
All right, read that entire section, if you would, Commissioner, so that there's no confusion with your clarification.
When a resolution is prepared, the name of the commissioner, individual, or department head requesting the resolution shall be included under the resolution number.
Okay. Everybody got it? That's the amendment to 110619. Any discussion on the amendment? I see none. All in favor of the amendment, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? One, who voted no? Commissioner Hancock, Commissioner Lynch voted no, so it's twenty yes, two no. Hancock and Lynch voting no. Reflect that in the minutes, please. So the motion, the amended, the amendment is passed, twenty yes, two no. So we're voting on 110619 as amended. All in favor of 110619 as amended, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Two no, two no's. How many no's? Commissioner Hancock, Commissioner Lynch voting no on the motion as amended. 110620, resolution amending the rules of procedure for the Williamson County Board of Commissioners relating to Rule 6.5, action of clerk with respect to resolutions. Commissioner Williams.
Move for approval.
Second.
Motion's made and seconded. Rules Committee report, five-four-zero against. Explanation, please.
This actually refers back to what I earlier said, as far as public knowledge of what was, what the commission is actually doing. And what we're asking here is to show that within five workdays from the date of the resolutions are signed, or from the 10th day veto period, a listing of each commissioner's vote on each resolution shall be drafted and posted on the Williamson County webpage.
Thank you, sir. Any other questions on 110620? See none. If you're in favor of 110620, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Show it unanimous. Twenty-two yes, zero no. 110621, resolution amending the rules of procedure for the Williamson County Board of Commissioners relating to 8.3, standing committees. Commissioner Williams.
A move for approval.
Second.
Motion's made and seconded. Rules Committee, five-four-zero against. Explanation, Commissioner Williams.
This is strictly a cleanup period based on recommendation, county attorney.
Okay. Any questions? I see none. All in favor of 110621, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Show it unanimous. Twenty-two yes, zero no. 110622, resolution amending the rules of procedure for the Williamson County Board of Commissioners relative, relating to Rule 9, compensation of commissioners. Commissioner Williams.
Move for approval.
Second.
Motion's made and seconded. Rules Committee report, five-four-zero against. Commissioner Williams.
Again, based on county attorney, that make this current, current compensation to the, each commissioner be paid, each commissioner is paid $500 per month, and the chairman is paid $550 per month.
Thank you, sir. Questions? I see none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Commissioner Lynch votes no. Twenty-one yes, one no. Commissioner Lynch voting no. 110624, resolution declaring certain property and equipment surplus property and authorizing the sale of the property by sealed bid. Commissioner Lynch, please.
Move for approval.
Motion's made and seconded. Property Committee.
Yield to Commissioner Barnwell. I wasn't there that night.
I wasn't there either.
I don't think this, I think this came up after you all met.
Okay, all right. So no, no committee report. Budget Committee.
Five far, zero against.
Thank you. Explanation, please.
What it is, this surplus property county doesn't need 143 Theata-type chairs, which we don't need. All right, those are the ones that are in this room. It'll be sold, because we're, after tonight's meeting, this room will be totally renovated. At least the floor. we're, after tonight's meeting, this room will be totally renovated. At least the floor and the seating, so.
After the school board meeting.
Right. So if you want a chair. Any discussion on 110624?
It's on the machine. 110624 is up for consideration. If you're in favor, press your yes button.
Oppose your no button. If anybody voted, wish to vote. Court of Vote, please.
Twenty-two yes.
Twenty-two yes, zero no. 110632, resolution authorizing the county mayor to enter into a lease agreement with the Tennessee Central Railroad System. Commissioner Hayes?
Move for approval. Second.
Motion is made and seconded. Budget Committee?
Five four zero against.
Thank you, sir. Explanation, Commissioner Hayes?
The credit goes to Mayor Anderson with this, if he has anything to add. But this is a historic caboose that has been stored at the museum, and they are willing to loan that to us, or lease that to us. I believe it's a dollar a year, or I believe it's 30 years. And the plan would be to place it at the Ag Expo Park.
Any questions of Commissioner Hayes? I see none. If you're in favor of 110632, press your yes button. Oppose your no button. Everybody voted, wish to vote. Court of Vote, please.
Twenty-two yes.
Thank you. Resolution unanimously adopted. Resolution to permit Williamson County to partner with the City of Franklin and its sister city program. Commissioner Wilson?
Motion to approve.
Okay. Motion is made and seconded to approve. Budget Committee report?
Budget Committee recommends against, two five three against. The reason why was because of the unknown amount of money involved.
Okay. Commissioner Wilson, explanation, please.
Yes, I'm gonna pass out to you an amendment on this resolution, if you will take time to pass that down. And while we're passing that down, the amendment resolution for 110633 is to accurately reflect the partnership of sister cities of Franklin, Inc., and not the City of Franklin, a chartered 501(c)(3) nonprofit organization. The amendment does not change the intent of the resolution, but revises the text to adequately reflect the proposed partnership as follows. Resolution to permit Williamson County to support the efforts of the sister cities of Franklin, Inc., to facilitate a possible relationship with the county of Leish, Ireland. And just a quick history on that is to let you know that when I went to Ireland in June, we met with the city council there. They are very interested and want, if I passed, to be able to come here in March of 2007. Through the sister cities of Franklin, Inc., we can facilitate that approval for them to be able to come here. There is no money needed, and that whole portion was taken out of there, where you will not need any funding from the county.
Commissioner Wilson, just a point of clarification. This entire piece of paper that you're giving us is the amendment.
That is the amendment.
So you're removing the references to funding. You're clarifying that this is with Franklin, Inc., and not the City of Franklin. So this entire resolution is, I understand it, this amendment is what's on this sheet of paper that you're proposing to amend 110633 to include this wording.
That is correct.
Is there a second to that amendment?
Second.
Okay. Motion made and seconded to amend 110633 to reflect exactly what's on this sheet. That removes any reference to funding and clarifies the issue regarding Franklin, Inc. Any questions on the amendment? Commissioner Bane?
Yes, I was on the Budget Committee, and I voted against this the first time. But with this new language, I totally support this.
Good.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Any other comments on this amendment on resolution 110633? I see none. 110633 amendments loaded on the machine. So if you're in favor, press your yes button. Oppose your no button. Everybody voted, wishes to vote. Court of Vote, please. The amendment is adopted. Twenty-two yes, so we're back to the original resolution of 110633 as amended. If you're in favor of 110633 as amended, press your yes button. Oppose your no button. Everybody voted, wish to vote. Court of Vote, please. Thank you. So the amendment and the amended resolution is adopted unanimously. Resolution 110634, resolution to approve lowering the speed limit on Murray Lane. Commissioner Walton?
Move for approval.
Second.
Motion made and seconded to adopt this. Highway Commission approved it. Five four zero against. Explanation, Commissioner Walton?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. I have an amendment in a minute to kind of clean this up a little bit. On Murray Lane, as you come, I believe it would be west on Murray Lane, leaving the city of Brentwood, the speed limit there is 35. And there's a small section of Murray Lane that's in the county that the speed increases to 45. And then it goes back, when it gets back into the city of Brentwood, it's 35 again. And I feel like it just needs to be, I've worked with the city of Brentwood, and we all feel like it needs to be consistent. So, but what I want to do is add an amendment. And then the third where is, the Board of Commissioners finds that it's the best interest of citizens of Williamson County to lower the speed limit on Murray Lane from its current speed limit of 45 miles to 35 miles per hour on the portion of Murray Lane, comma, from Berry's Chapel Road to Brentwood City limit. If we can delete the, which lies in unincorporated area of Williamson County.
From Berry's Chapel Road to?
To the Brentwood City limit.
To the Brentwood City limit. So that now reads, the Board of Commissioners finds it the best interest of citizens of Williamson County to lower the speed limit on Murray Lane from its current speed limit of 45 miles to 35 miles per hour on the portion of Murray Lane from Berry's Chapel Road to the Brentwood City limits.
I'm sorry, it's Holly Tree Gap.
I was about to say, I don't think, it's Holly Tree Gap.
Holly Tree Gap.
That's another resolution, Governor. It's late.
So instead of Berry's Chapel, it's?
It's Holly Tree Gap.
Holly Tree Gap. Okay. I was wondering when Berry's Chapel made it that far over. So the resolution then reads, on the portion of Murray Lane from Holly Tree Gap Road to the Brentwood City limits, period. Is there a second to the amendment?
Second.
Motion is made and seconded. You've heard the amendment offered by Commissioner Walton. Any discussion on the amendment? Commissioner Hester, please?
I beg all of your pardon. I am out of order, and I am for this resolution, number 110634. I just noticed something on resolution 110624 concerning the equipment, the chairs in this room. I believe the date is wrong on that.
Okay, let's, we'll come back to that.
Yes, sir.
Let's take, thank you. Any other questions on 110634? Let's see. Commissioner Bane, you had a question?
That road borders my district, and I travel it every day, and I think this is a great suggestion.
Thank you, sir. Anybody else on this amendment for 110634? I see none. If you're in favor of the amendment that's offered by Commissioner Walton, press your yes button. Oppose your no button. Court of Vote, please.
Twenty-two yes.
The amendment passes. Twenty-two yes, zero no. Now we're back to resolution 110634 as amended. Any discussion on the resolution as amended? I see none. If you're in favor, press your yes button. Oppose your no button. Court of Vote, please.
Twenty-two yes.
So the resolution as amended passes. Twenty-two yes, zero no. Now back to 110624. Recognized. Commissioner Hester, please.
Please excuse me. Having sat in these seats several times, it'd probably be a good idea to replace them. But on that resolution, it says on this 14th day of November two?
Should be the 13th day of November 2006. So thank you for pointing me that. We'll just make that correction as a typographical. If the clerk would make that correction on the resolution, that is clearly a typo. And thank you, Commissioner Hester, for catching it, boys.
Thank you.
110637, resolution authorizing the county mayor to execute a grant agreement with the federal government for a road construction project off Natchez Trace Parkway. Commissioner Hayes?
Approve.
Second.
Motion is made and seconded. Highway Commission adopted this. Five four zero against. Parks and Rec Committee?
It was unanimous, but I don't remember the exact number.
Six zero. Okay, Parks and Rec, six four zero against. Budget Committee?
Budget Committee is in favor. Five four zero against.
Thank you. Explanation, Commissioner Hayes?
Yes, sir. If you fellow commissioners will bear me a few moments. It will take a couple of minutes to explain this, but it's taken years to get to this point. So if you could spare me a couple of minutes, I would like to acknowledge some people who have worked very hard. Several years back, the state of Tennessee was ready to auction some property. We saw that in the paper, and we went to work with some assistance of our state representatives at that time, and were able to talk the state into giving it to us. Doug Hood was instrumental in that, John Wisnack, Nancy Conway, Callicott, who was the county executive at the time. We got 72 acres given to us on the Natchez Trace. The problem with that was it was not accessible. It was basically landlocked. We were told that probably there would be no way to get into that land. But we started working with the Natchez Trace Parkway. I serve on the Natchez Trace Parkway Association Board, as does Nancy Conway. Wendell Simpson was a very good friend of Williamson County, and he's recently retired. We got a group together, including then Superintendent Mr. Meeks, engineer, the late Jim Collier, Clint Callicott, Nancy Conway, I think I said Doug Hood, and several of us met together. And we worked out an arrangement that we would request, that the Natchez Trace Parkway would request money to be planned for this excess road. Mr. Collier donated his services to us to draw the original plans. Mr. Meeks, with Eddie Hood, then his assistants, realized that possibly they could do the work. But at that time, the Federal Highway Commission did not want that done. With much soliciting through the Natchez Trace Parkway Association, our local chamber, and all of us working with Mr. Superintendent Simpson and other legislative people, those in Washington, Commissioner Wilson assisted us. Several people really did put some pressure. It was written a year or so ago into the budget of the Natchez Trace Parkway for this purpose. So bids were let. Well, 300,000 was the appropriate amount when we started, but the bids came in excess of $500,000. We realized that was not going to be something that was going to be very good. So we brought Eddie Hood back out with Doug Hood's help and County Mayor Anderson's help. And they looked at it, and they can do and have agreed to do this work with the permission of the Natchez Trace Parkway and the permission of the Federal Highway Commission will do this work and can do it for $300,000. So we will, in essence, have an excess road into our own branch of our park, our Williamson County Passive Park, 72 acres off the Natchez Trace, at absolutely no expense. Just a lot of friends and a lot of work from a lot of people. And I just thought for the record, that needs to be acknowledged, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you.
And I thank you for that.
Thank you, ma'am. Other questions of Commissioner Hayes on this resolution? Worked well done involving a lot of people, so thank you so much. Any questions? See none. All in favor of 110637? Press your yes button. Oppose your no button. If everybody voted, wish to vote. Court of Vote, please.
Twenty-two yes.
Thank you. Resolution unanimously adopted. Resolution 110638, late file resolution, resolution authorizing the county mayor to enter into an interlocal agreement with the city of Brentwood for the construction and use of a telecommunications tower. Commissioner Chalfont?
Move for approval.
Second.
Motion is made and seconded. Law Enforcement Committee?
Seven in favor, zero against.
Thank you. Budget Committee?
We didn't hear this.
Thank you, sir. Commissioner Chalfont?
This is another one of several communication towers that are being erected around the county. The money is, this is grant money from Homeland Security, and this particular tower is on Robert E. Lee Lane.
Very good. Thank you, Commissioner Chalfont. Any questions of Commissioner Chalfont? I see none. 110638 is up for consideration. If you're in favor, press your yes button. Oppose your no button. Everybody voted, wish to vote. Court of Vote, please.
Twenty-two yes.
Thank you. Resolution unanimously adopted. Resolution 110639, resolution authorizing the county mayor to enter to an interlocal agreement with the city of Brentwood for the purchase and use of a high-speed notification system. Commissioner Chalfont?
Move for approval.
Motion is made and seconded. Law Enforcement and Public Safety Committee?
The Law Enforcement and Public Safety Committee this evening did not have the answers to several questions, so they deferred action on it.
Okay. All right.
But however, we have learned some additional information since that meeting. It was?
You want to report to Commissioner Chalfont?
Rather fast-moving. This also, this equipment is already in place. The primary pieces of equipment are installed in our E-911 area. This also is an agreement with, and the mayor wants to elaborate on this. This is a, an agreement with Brentwood that has a, an adjoining responsibility as far as this program is concerned.
Thank you, sir. Mayor Anderson?
Mr. Chairman, at the, at the law enforcement committee, I could not answer one of the questions, and I think the question?
It was presented to me. Why, what are we doing with Brentwood? Is that correct, Steve? And in talking with Jeff, our attorney, I had, I wasn't thinking when y'all asked me that, if you will remember, Brentwood has their own 911 district. And so we have to do an interlocal agreement to do the high-speed notification with them. All this is, is interlocal agreement.
Commissioner Smith?
Thank you. So we have equipment here in our 911 center that allows us to communicate to citizens in Brentwood that are on a high-speed notification system. And we have to have an agreement with Brentwood in order to use our equipment to call their citizens in case of an emergency.
Do I have to answer that?
Yes. You were shaking your head. I could hear it.
They had a district before we had a district, and so the lawyers say we have to have an agreement to work all that out.
Okay.
That's right. It's the lawyer's fault. Any other questions on 110639? If you're in favor of 110639, press your yes button. Oppose your no button. Everybody voted, wish to vote. Court of Vote, please.
Twenty-two yes.
Twenty-two yes, zero no. Motion unanimously adopted. Resolution 110640, a resolution to authorize the county mayor to accept a donation of rock for a stone wall reconstruction. Commissioner Brockman?
Move for approval. Second.
Motion is made and seconded. Explanation, please?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This is important. Rock that will be added to a stone wall that's going to be reconstructed. We were, we got an enhancement grant two years ago. We knew we didn't have enough stone, because some of it had been taken away from the original historic wall. But we stored what we had at the highway department. And that's been cleaned and ready to go into the, to the wall when it's, when it's constructed. This is rock on the same property that we can now add to what we're going to put back up. And I want to thank Mayor Anderson and Joe Horn for, for working this out, because it will be very important to this project to move forward.
Any questions of Commissioner Brockman on 110640? Commissioner Brockman, for the record, where is the fence?
Well, it's within, within the subdivision, which is called Legends Ridge.
Okay.
And as they're proceeding with their final phase, they are not using this rock. proceeding with their final phase, they are not using this rock, and so it's of the same period as the original wall, and will be added to ours.
Okay. Mayor?
Mr. Chairman, I may also add to that, that, and if you were going up Hillsborough Road, there's a big barn right across from Matt Dobson's property. It's direct across street. The other reason we're doing this, once you all accept this property, if some of that rock should be removed, then they will have consequences with Williamson County government as opposed to an individual.
Now, the reason I wanted to record, reflect, which wall, if you recall, there was a wall not far from there, up Berry's Chapel. I just want to make sure that we're talking about the same wall.
The wall, that wall was taken down. We were able to salvage most of the stone, not all of it. This is another wall that was, that ran, that ran parallel to it.
Okay. Thank you, ma'am. Other questions on eleven oh six forty? In favor, press the yes button. Oppose, you know button. Everybody voted, wish to vote? Court of vote, please. Thank you. Twenty-two, yes, zero, no. Resolution unanimously adopted. And then finally, late file resolution eleven oh six forty-one, resolution amending the rules of procedure for the Williamson County Board of Commissioners relating to Rule eight point one c. Committees, Commissioner Williams?
The lawyer is delighted to move this final resolution for approval.
So, the lawyer did get a second. The rules, the committee voted five, four, zero against. Explanation, Commissioner Williams?
This again is cleanup based upon county attorney's recommendation, another lawyer, that to clean up ambiguous language, basically that no, any commissioner can only chair one of the standing commissions.
Thank you, sir. Any questions on this eleven oh six forty-one? Eleven oh six forty-one is up for consideration. If you're in favor, press the yes button. Oppose, you know button. Has everybody voted, wish to vote? If you haven't voted. I didn't vote. Court of vote, please. Twenty-two, yes, zero, no. Resolution is unanimously adopted, so.
Let the record reflect that the lawyer got a unanimous vote there.
The lawyer did get a unanimous vote. Mayor Anderson, any?
Yes, I've got one other thing for the lawyers that don't sleep good at night. This book needs to be read by him.
Okay.
And-
I have enough reading to do.
The book that's on your desk is the mitigation report that is required action upon you. Mike Thompson has worked very feverishly. This will all be, also be going to all the cities, and this will have to be approved at the January County Commission meeting. And this, because of the length of this book and the weight of it, this is the only one we will be sending out, so if you have any questions, give us a call. Thank you.
Commissioner Hancock?
Question. We approved a zoning resolution for onsite sale of milk at the dairies. Does that apply to vineyards also, that the juice from the grape after processed can be sold onsite?
Let me pass it over to the attorneys.
I have no idea. We'll get you an answer on that, though.
Thank you.
Let me remind all of you that, you know, we, we will be meeting tomorrow night with the town of Spring Hill at 5:30, in the chambers of the Spring Hill Board of Mayor and Alderman, in the meeting room that they meet in. Any, all of you are invited to go, because this is a meeting tomorrow night that's for the purpose of addressing all these issues we've talked about tonight. Let me also put you on notice that should the action not be approved as asked by this commission at their meeting on November the twentieth, as a matter of fact, we're meeting tomorrow night, and then their official Board of Mayor and Alderman meeting is on the twentieth, if they do not comply with the request that's here, I will be calling a special called meeting the first week of December to address our action that we take. So this will give them an opportunity to let you know my intent. If perchance, they take it under advisement on the twentieth, and then don't give us an answer, it'll give them plenty of time, but we must take action of this body to accept these bids by the eighth day of December, otherwise the bids are gone. So, that's the schedule. I'll be in touch as we see what occurs in Spring Hill, but again, as Commissioner Hayes and Lynch have indicated, and Commissioner Cook is Chair of the Parks and Rec Committee, and Mr. Hood and Mayor Anderson, it is our intent to work with them as a partner. We do have a problem, and we've got to address where we go from here, and that's, that's why I want to thank Mr. York for pulling this together for tomorrow night. Commissioner Cook?
I thought when we had our meeting, they said that we couldn't wait till the eighth. We had to have a couple of days for the contracts to be signed.
No, ma'am, the attorneys, and also, not attorneys, got attorneys on the mind. The gentleman working on the project said as long as we offered a letter of intent by the eighth.
I don't think so.
Correct. You were there, Bobby. Was that not what was reported? So, the folks that have, that are administering the bids indicated we'd have to issue a letter of intent by the eighth in order to protect those bids, and then contracts would be drawn subsequent to that date. Any other comments, questions, suggestions? Excuse me, Commissioner Brockman?
Thank you. I just wanted to alert everyone that before our January meeting, the Land Trust for Tennessee is hosting a, an event, and hopefully you will, you'll be able to attend to hear about the efforts and successes of this group, particularly in Williamson County, and you'll also hear about a new initiative that is entitled Loveless to Leapers, and of course, that is of particular interest, because it's about the Natchez Trace Parkway and its few sheds, et cetera, so. And they'll serve a little food, I hope, as well.
Thank you very much. Any other reports before we close the session? I want to thank you for your help and cooperation tonight. This is the longest agenda, the most resolutions that I ever remember we've ever had on a commission meeting, including the July term of court. We had a full three pages of agenda tonight to take care of, and I want to thank you for your cooperation, and we got through in about three hours, a little break in the middle, so. Thank you. Have a nice Thanksgiving and Merry Christmas, and see you back on, in January, unless we have a special meeting in a couple of weeks. I'll move, entertain a motion to adjourn.
Move.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
We're in adjournment. Have a good evening.